Okay, I've unmuted.
Right, welcome back to our one viewer, you know, we're going to invite the other viewers too, but welcome back. Good to see you. Okay, so we are back into the annual budget review. We have just agreed who will be our suppliers, best value suppliers for next year for our design, for our production, printing obviously, and for delivery. And those figures are built into this recommended project?
Yes.
Okay, right. So we've got to change this picture for somebody else.
Um, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, right, so anyway. Our officers have correctly and with full foresight predicted how we would vote on the supply. So that's building the recommended budget. So the budget for this year, for the current year, twenty four, twenty five, is for publicity newsletter is six, seven, seven, three. And the rise is down to extra costs that are being imposed upon us by, well, world inflation pressures and the price of paper mostly, isn't it? Okay, so that six, seven, seven, three, seven thousand four hundred is a rise of more than three thousand percent, obviously. But that's been offset by a reduction in the website costs because we've managed to use existing software that we have to produce the summer newsletter which promotes the fringe. So when that's all taken into account, I think it's a budget rise of about three and a half percent. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes, first.
Yeah, Martin.
Can I say that, of course, we have to produce newsletters to keep our gold standard?
Well, not only does it exist anymore, does it?
Oh, does it not?
No, it didn't. I think we lost it.
No, we inadvertently didn't reply.
We don't have it.
We don't have it at the moment.
Oh, right.
Okay, but we don't do that just for the sake of a tick box and somebody else's award. We do it because it's good practice to let people know what we're doing.
Yeah, but we moved into that category where we had to do some communication.
That's one of the features of getting the
Yes, exactly.
Is that they were regulations, unlike obviously some town council.
Yes.
Currently, I think because of other factors, we didn't apply.
Yes, there were other factors.
Yeah.
Publication, we find publications, but we didn't quite follow by following the year that we applied.
So are we heading back towards that?
That'll be town clerk.
Must change. Okay, all right, okay. Well, something, could we have a report on that for our next meeting?
God standard.
Because it is a godsend about communications, isn't it, really?
I honestly don't know what it is. I think it is, that's just one of many factors that they look at.
Okay.
When you move into the million pound mark or something.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, it's a standard of town council. It covers many, many different things.
But we still, we still have the, what's the phrase for it? Where we can decide to do things because of the level that we are.
Yes.
It's all gonna be about that phrase is.
You're on your own then.
I mean, I hope you're not speaking out there. Is this something we should promote as a motion, a next one so we can have the information? And then, because it's all before my time, so I can't contribute in any way.
I think given the audience rating.
Well, just looking to it, I don't think we need a full report. We just need to know the ins and outs.
These kind of power competence, do we still have that?
We do have power competence, town clerk and power competence.
Right.
When they're qualified under.
Yes, that's what I thought.
So yes, we can, we can do all that.
Is that separate from the gold standard?
It is separate, yeah. So once you have a qualified town clerk as the town clerk, then they have the power competence to spend effectively a pre-set depending on the actions.
Okay.
Which is separate, but yes, we, why don't, yeah, why don't we look at it?
Yeah, let's, let's review that and then we can look at our aspect of that.
Oh, yeah.
So that we're aware of, that we're, we're doing our bit for the whole council to have a gold standard.
I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't know.
I'm sorry, sorry, neither do we.
That's like, we're on the index.
You're not on your own.
So, yeah, we're not on your agenda.
Sorry, sort of ahead of us.
Thank you, Martin. That's a word well, one to have raised. It's always good to know that. Okay, but generally speaking, we are, it is recommended, committee recommend the budget changes to recommend, there we go. Budgets listed to resources, committee. Are we agreeing with that? If so, hands up.
Agreed.
Okay, agreed. Fine, good. You're going to the second look for that. I think it's, I think.
Seconded.
As a chair, I'm allowed to propose things just on my own.
Are you? Oh, that's powerful, isn't it?
But now I've got, I've been wrong once in a while. I won't say sure. No, it's all right.
When do I, and I've never looked at standing orders, I promise.
You should.
Don't listen to that.
But I have, so I'm.
Bonus, that's all right.
I know, and I have them for Rotary and I live and die by, you know, getting them, right? So I'm very familiar with, it's set as standing orders, but I just need to get.
We sail fairly close, but most of the time it has to be, you know, like motions from the floor. There's only a certain category that can be proposed from the floor. You can't, you can't really propose generally.
Really? Okay, I'll keep an eye out for all this.
Yes, so it's something to be aware of. Right, okay. So, I think that deals with item four. So now we come on to the newsletter appendix A. Right, before people, if people arrive, we should just say this now. The next newsletter will be issued during the Pirda period. And that means, and Zoe has helpfully got some advice from, no, wasn't even that. Advice on what we can do and not do during the period. Broadly speaking, if we're reporting on ordinary business at the town council, and there's a, like, there's an ordinary introduction from the town there, a civic position, which doesn't include Vote For Me, as it were, because that probably would be the frigging burger. Then I think we're okay, but we need to be aware, need to be aware of that. And I think probably, apart from the mayor, there shouldn't be any photographs of any town councillors in the next newsletter. It should be photographs of people other than the town councillors, just so that we're not seen promoting anybody's image and therefore their role in that.
Margaret. Yeah, just, I, I agree with that absolutely. And presumably that will be transmitted to Anya before she starts writing a newsletter. I mean, the, you know, the message from your man.
Yeah, can you do that? Need a process?
Definitely. And maybe, because we don't normally amend it other than like typos, but we would maybe need to have that possibility if we think something's questionable because of Pirda.
Annie's fairly cute about all this stuff. So I think she'd probably be aware of that, but I think it would have, just, Nina just mentions it in passing, that, given Zoe's research, it came up, yes.
So does that mean apart from photos or any of the articles allowed to mention councillors or not? No.
Let us see, probably not.
Yeah, so the, the words, I mean, there's, they've sent me all the paragraphs and the coding, but the first sentence says it all, you would have to be extremely careful.
Yeah.
Um, so to err on the side of extreme caution, I think it's been that. And as we later, we did publish one in twenty twenty when we were in Pirda for the elections. Just because we've done it for, doesn't mean we did it hundred percent right. So we reviewed that edition. There have been launches of previous town councillors that slip through the next. There are, we have few messages in there that we, this time around, we choose to, to take out.
Okay.
So we're building on what we've done previously.
Well, that's fine. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so going down pages, the council tax, that's fine, because that's already set and we're just advising people.
Yeah.
The list of councillors and numbers.
I think list of councillors who they are, I think that's kind of okay. Surely that's going to be a statement of fact. You know, we will still be councillors at that time.
I think that feels all right to me.
Does it? I mean, you're not saying, it could still be on our website. Yeah, but you're not saying, oh, these are the people there, are you?
No, I don't think so. I think they are just our councillors.
Yeah, it's just a directory, isn't it? More than a, it's not.
Well, so it's a picture, you know, this event happened.
Yeah, but. It shows engagement and, and things like that, I guess, doesn't it?
Okay, all right, okay.
Just, just going back.
Judge, but I think you're okay.
All right, just going back to pictures. I just, just a thought that of the mayor. She quite often wears her nice yellow jacket and she might not want to wear her yellow jacket at that point.
And she did tell me she's going to get her first name changed to Vote For Me.
Shame.
Vote For Me shame.
No, that's not, I'm sure, yeah. Okay, um, I think, need to take advice on that.
I just, I think, I think the advice is to be very, be very careful.
Yeah, I think.
I don't think.
Yeah, and that's why you zoomed in, which.
Yeah, actually, we use a stock image for Annie. We have in the past two or three editions. She's got May, mayoral, I can't say that word, mayoral chain on a grey jacket.
That's fine.
So I think we use that.
Yeah.
Because it's a tradition that has especially that she is the first citizen of the town.
Exactly.
As the town clerk is the second citizen of the town. Right, okay.
Has the wig to prove.
That's true, that is true. Cops, town clerks, they're unstuck and some law. Right, okay, so let's go through this in the usual way. Spring picture, I don't know, something with frames on it, I guess.
Yes, in the book.
Not.
Maybe disappointed, I'm just saying.
No, that's like, it's a rare candidate, it's right. They're quite cute.
We, well.
Running past the old jail.
And now if we look at how we do our photographs in future, because we are having a change around in terms of who actually is putting together the production of the newsletter, and photographs does take up a huge amount of our time in terms of finding seasonally appropriate images that are also relevant to Buckingham and quite iconic Buckingham as well. So I agree, spring lamb would be lovely, very hard to get that in Buckingham or somewhere that's identified as Buckingham as well. And it is based on officers actually going out and taking photographs, either we lost their time or when an event is up. So there are quite a few negatives, because we do have quite a few cameras doing the dogs.
I do. Oh, for you, yeah. No, I was just thinking, Nina, when I look at, okay, well, that's you, by the way. There, or, you know, my own, but there's loads of people taking lovely photographs of Buckingham. I don't know who they are, but, you know, various names do crop up regularly of local people who pop out in the morning and just take those wonderful photographs. I don't know if you can just clock a few of their names and.
We, we have, we have permission, we have that permission.
Oh, yeah, because I asked them to.
Maybe we should run a little contest and put it on Facebook saying, would you like to contribute to our next, the photos within our next newsletter?
Yeah.
So we have used, we've done that previously.
Yeah, so it's the mix and when they do, they have to give permission for us to use them on.
Yes, by entering this competition, you've got automatically permission for us to use your image.
Yeah.
Would spring cows be out by the time we need to send off?
March, not a lot of snowdrops. I mean, they might be, that's always out at the beginning in March, I know that.
Or the weather we're getting at the moment, anything could happen at any time. I've got roses, excellent, I just.
Well, we have, we've done, from Tish, so you've got amateur photographers that have got a whole bank of seasonal photographs making contributions, I think, from last spring. Yeah.
And the, just one last comment, this was the Friendsley University, I keep thinking, wow. They've just had a photographic competition. So the students are there busy taking photographs. And they had an AI picture competition, which was stunning. So this is grown barter organising these. So, so there are people in the, youngsters in the university who might be able to help you as well.
Do we leave that with you guys?
Yeah, so let's get other sources.
Avoid any dominant colours that might be subject to concern for artists. Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. Previously, we've used images from the calendar. Are we, have we not done a calendar this year? No.
We, no, we've done, I have had, there was a conversation that the calendar that we do is not annual. I can't remember the timeframe it was.
It was annual.
What do you mean, not annual?
That we don't do one, no, we don't do one every year, as in we don't produce one on an annual basis. I think the last one that was produced and sold through the tick was when Emma Churchill was here as our town centre manager. She, she'd done two back to back. First one sold incredibly well and really popular. The second one, it sort of ran out of steam slowly, so we didn't have as many people contributing. As many people sort of purchasing the different products. So she'd come up with a different idea, which was then sold through tick. It's two thousand or months or something, but it was a, it was a source information led project. It could be something that.
Didn't go with any.
It started to develop.
It's sort of stopped off, it's, yeah, it's really kind of, but you picked that wrong.
But I suspect they're maybe not as popular as they used to be, because most people use it, like, new stuff, don't they? So, and I often do wonder with, even like with the Christmas cards, to be actually break even or, you know.
Well, it's.
Yeah, there's no cost to the Christmas card competition.
Okay.
Zero cost.
But, but, but we must have part photos from previously, whether or not they're from calendars. And, you know, and I take the point about Pirda with colours, but then you'd be excluding yellow, red and blue, wouldn't you? So what would you have?
Maybe green.
Oh, green, yeah, yeah.
Definitely purple.
So you can't.
Okay, so it's a bit of black. And why not?
Trusty fairy quarters.
Black, white, colour, other than that.
Okay.
How about that?
I'm asking you.
Standing up by the old jail.
But in the next informal meeting, we'll submit as usual for all different images each to each.
It's got lots of covers in it, that's all right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Fine, that's just item one. Right, let's, we're all going to discuss and obviously Nina's certainly always going to have a chat with. Staff changes, Robert Doris, will be in spaces team.
Yeah, who's this?
Okay, what? Okay, well, working on it. Okay, so half a page, you're on, that would be good. Okay, town events. Remember last time we agreed that we weren't going to have past, current or future, just about. Town events, because it's got confusing about exactly when these things are happening itself. They will have dates on them, so people know, but there'll be some past, some current, as it were, and some in the future, all right? And these are the ones we're going to be having. Okay.
So just adding to that, where, where highlighted, we read, as John said, just photograph and title. And the rest of them, as we did in the last edition, we might just have a short description about the event.
Yeah.
I think there was only two in the edition that's just gone out where there was good endings there and another, a short description, and the others were just titles.
Well, some things speak for themselves, don't they? I mean, the main day with the picture of the main board, this doesn't need any. Okay, three pages of that, which is great.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, even sometimes ask me, what does town councillor do, what does theshire councillor do? And I say, do the fun stuff. They do the hard stuff. Okay, council tax and pre-set, two pages infographic text. This is a standard thing that we have in this previous edition. I don't think it risks any contribu, any contravention of Pirda, because it is simply saying, what the council tax is, where the pre-set is, where it's going, blah, 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 blah.
It's normal business.
Normal business, yeah.
Is that, are they the same pages?
They can be.
Well, because it folds out, because it's often in thirds, isn't it? You know, I think Martin's right. I think center page on that would be good, yeah. Okay, your views count as usual, although I don't think we've ever, anybody's ever responded to that, have they? We ever had? Is it worth?
So I'm going to go, it's worth, have we put it in there?
Well, yeah, that's all I'm wondering.
Well, it does, it goes into how you can feedback to the town council also. It's not just a pull out slip and pull out and paste it. You've got email, aggressive, the feedback element of our website. You can attend a session, it talks about how you, a council meeting, and we do get feedback via those routes. So it's hard to say.
In which case, it's our shop window and therefore we should put that on, okay, but we're in it, all right. Uh, this is councillors and numbers. Yeah, I was talking, I was talking with that about this. The, we put in the street, Fix My Street, website address. And it just looks a bit clunky where it is at the moment. Have you got, anybody got a copy of that? Anybody got a copy of that?
Other than you, up to the.
No, so the current edition is still being delivered.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Right, okay, I haven't seen the.
Uh, we pull up a work group.
Yeah. Well, it's simple to describe without showing it to people though, really. What else?
I guess it doesn't have Fix My Street in this one.
Oh, that, oh, it's the next one that's coming up then, Martin.
Yeah, it's the one that's being distributed at the moment. Punkier, aren't you? Is it separate from the air zip format?
It's a formatic thing.
Yeah.
And I said it ought to go into the transport files.
Yeah.
In that column and not, and you don't need to put in Fix My Street and the website.
Yes, it's there, it's added there. So we have a directory of town councillors' names and numbers. And then underneath we have useful numbers.
Yeah, what I was suggesting is if you put the transport button, sure, maybe at the bottom. And simply put also underneath, underneath that, Fix My Street. So we've got a phone number and then the website.
Yeah.
And that's all.
Yeah.
I mean, also you leave as it's the moment.
Yeah.
But I think that would just look better, that it looks, the moment this looks, because it's fat and everything, it's a lie. It's my own CD, I think, please forgive me.
The underneath.
Yeah, I would, I would put, yeah, I would put. Yeah.
The, the, the argument is what we are doing here, Fix My Streets, we're referring to a website, not my portal. Rest of them telephone numbers. There are many online buildings that we can reference within here.
Yes, I know that. Yeah, right. I was still, well, that's the best way, you can delete the phrase Fix My Street, just simply put in. Just so that people realise what it is then.
Well, the question that we asked the designer, as, as it's her role, could you make this look a little?
Yeah.
This is what she comes up with.
Yeah, let's do that.
I mean, that's, that's her expertise, isn't it?
It is.
Just as a suggestion.
Good thinking.
Okay, we'll do that. See what she comes back with and then we can play around with it.
It could straddle the two columns, couldn't it, at the bottom?
We can do that, yeah, yeah. Has anyone noticed that the path from, you know, the bridge near the skate park, the path that goes through the, through the, next to the yellow foot, there's a tree coming over there, went to the wall. I saw it too, no, I know, right. It's crazy. Okay, so events diary up until the fringe twenty five, on the back as usual. Okay, so all right with that?
Yeah.
And that has all been agreed with TCME as well, so the dates are.
Sorry, I didn't tell you.
Uh, the dates have all been confirmed at TCME, so they are.
Good.
So spring articles. Okay. Okay, that's fine, that's okay. Just as a matter of interest, with the number of pages or whatever, are they all able to get in?
So no, so these are just suggestions. If, we can't include all of them, there's eighteen pages. So what we have just agreed, our stat tree elements, if you like, of our newsletter. And we, we need to share two pages here.
All right, so we normally have sixteen, though.
We normally have sixteen.
All right, so we've got to pare this down to somebody, have to loosen the size, so, okay. Right. BNDV update on progress. Is that Pirda compatible?
It's, it's all of us, it's all of us.
Politically led, is it?
No.
Plan for the community, not the political plan, I would have suggested.
Okay, but needs not to avoid having names of councillors over there.
Absolutely.
And the progress, where would it be?
So it will be, when does it get to print? February, so it goes to print seventh of February. It's hard to say at this moment.
We have a referendum date, I think.
County have said that they will not look to have a referendum before the election. So we are more likely to be looking at a referendum date June on.
Not on election day, so. It's a shame, because it would make more sense. Because everyone's down voting and they can vote for this at St. Luke.
So we would be, it would be an update, but it would, a half page would be more than sufficient to just say, we probably, that probably will have taken recommendations to the council working group. Most likely, we will have submitted reviews on the policies back to county or their comments, and it may be that we're then going into the next stage of consultation. Regulations existing. So it's, yes, it would be a short, not particularly maybe interesting to everybody update on.
All right, so.
Okay, so.
I think it's, you can tell it.
Well, we can, wait, over the next meeting when we've got an actual article, we can agree whether it's appropriate to include it or not, can't we?
Okay, half major of the May elections, just to remind you people, go out and vote for your town councillor and yourshire councillor. It's just those two elections on, that is, there's a BCC election.
Just, just to say, when it uses the word in Pirda, what do we actually say in the magazine itself though? Because do people, I mean, I understand it, but does, does everybody understand out there?
Within the election period maybe also.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, yeah, we, I don't think we'll refer to Pirda, as you say, just, yeah.
It's one of those, I mean.
It's a.
It's a cheeky word, isn't it? Yeah, long as they just say that word.
Is it worth mentioning the boundary changes in that little?
Yeah.
Not that they can do anything about it, but just to say.
Well, we're, we're on schedule to go back to north and south in town council, aren't we?
Yeah.
I think, and obviously for theshire council, there are only three councillors for the town and on the roads, as it were. I think Tindray is now falling into another, another wall, so I think.
Yeah, it is.
And we've got kind of all of the town plus stuff that were.
Do we think that's a safer subject?
Yes.
I think, that's, that's not why you want to vote one way or another. It's telling people.
Decided.
The number that, that you should provide to see by people throughout Sunday.
It's just describing where the boundaries are.
Yeah, you know, be aware, town councillors have changed, like this, I'm, we're going to, it's going to be enough to be honest.
Again, going back to twenty twenty, when we were, we had an article based on, yes, and it was a half page, it was a bit graphic as well.
Okay, all right.
Thought about. Graphic will be good.
Yeah, and it didn't mention, obviously, names, it just talked about how you can vote, how you can register, the number of seats.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. There will be other things to weigh in, which one. All right, so we agree with that?
Yeah.
Uh, community grants awarded, again, that's what we put in. Where the money's gone, where we spent, you know, other people's money on local associations and charities and so on.
And those grants are still coming Monday, it's the closing date for those, so.
Yeah, that's usually good to call it to say. Right, I'm just, for instance, I, I was teaching people a couple of days ago on commissioning for, as it happens, piece of product conditions, most of all. And I reference the work that we did on making our roads work better as part of good practice to let. So, these grants are often underused when they could use a lot more, to commission a tune. Right, update on the new cemetery. Would we have the things to update? Because it'd be going very stale space right now.
Again, we're looking at going to print February, early February. We're hoping, fingers crossed, that we will have planning permission. Decision will be made around about six and a half. So, yes, we will definitely be able to say something, even if it's just owning the land and we now have planning permission and for tucks and fencing.
But what you can't do is include those lovely photos.
We've already talked about.
And you blur our whole face then.
It would be an empty.
Probably needs that.
Yeah.
No, we don't use it, but it.
I think we may have taken one of the team, the green spaces team, of the fence, so we could use that.
Yeah.
For our righties officers.
I just wonder if there's enough to say at that point, it doesn't sound very.
The whole work, it sounds like a lot.
So our, our thought on that is that you could, there are photographs or images, graphics that we could use, even if it's a layout map of what the cemetery and allotments will look like. So I think that's, often the feedback we get is, oh, that's not going to be, yeah, on the Tindray Road, I can't fucking picture it. So whilst we've done it before, it's always worth reiterating where the new cemetery is going to be.
But would it be worthwhile to put it in half a page?
Uh, in a page, yes, yeah, definitely, within one page.
For the graphics, you can take that part off.
Oh, okay.
Then, big enough with the read, the whole, and scratch into the.
No, at that point, when the first usage is likely to be possible, no, we wouldn't, no.
No, so if everything goes to plan, then it's possible construction will be completed next year into the winter of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. But I don't think you could, you could estimate at this point when it will be open for businesses.
No, okay.
We have a special kind of councillors going together to dig the first grain.
Oh, no.
Just one.
Or fill it. Oh, no.
If you have a dummy ruts.
I like feeling very well.
Put the dog, you were to one side of you.
Yeah.
Must, laughing about death is a good thing to do. Okay, so, all right.
We're going to lose two pages, I think, here, haven't we?
Well, that's what, I think that's what we're thinking, really, a whole page on a cemetery that we don't know anything about yet.
Well, I think that's. Well, I think that, saying graphics, it's something you'll know where it is. No, I'm just, I'm just reiterating that Nina said two pages has got to come out of this lot somewhere.
Hmm.
Are we still got a few articles to go?
We've got some more to go.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
For the moment, let's keep that, see what else we get.
We've got three on spring, spring, spring and spring.
Yeah.
And health, embracing and enjoying.
All right, so, we agree so far, the recommendations, the suggestions.
Very good, I suppose.
Okay, so, health and wellness in springtime. It's a nice idea, I think it might want to be, it's actually filmed.
It's a nice find, that one with the cemetery, because it mentions.
Well, the allotments, yeah, the allotments go in the cemetery article.
Well, the allotment, that could go in the article about the cemetery, cemetery and allotments, isn't it?
Yes.
We need to remind people of that.
And don't confuse the two.
Do we have a waiting list?
We do not.
Do we need to have one?
Well, I bet it has grown really well this year.
We, we have no expressions of interest when we have, um, spoken to other allotment societies, in fact, of people obtaining a plot at the new place. But we will be working with the current allotment societies while we start building the allotments.
Can we challenge that anyway? Because if we're only working with existing allotment societies, that means only working with people that may probably allotment others. So it's a kind of closed community in that sense.
And we're pilfering their business.
It's not really inclusive of everybody who might have moved and, and people have already moved to Lace Hill. We've yet to discover that, you know, it's a middle of town, people often just don't around themselves, it seems. Um, so I, I would, I would say we ought to be, absolutely using the previous article on the cemetery to promote that there are going to be allotments up here. And people might want to start thinking about.
Not register, uh, an interest.
Register interest and the, the email address or whatever.
Hmm.
So.
Well, I was just thinking, with that in mind, and the fact we need to lose two pages, could we potentially put embracing spring in Buckingham and enjoy the spring weather with shopability as a one page, so half a page each, and keep two pages on town centre regeneration and lose the top one because you'll be putting the allotments in with the cemetery bits.
Yeah, good idea. That sounds good.
Because there's a flow then to it, isn't there?
Yeah.
And actually, what we're showcasing is the new things that we're doing with that money that's coming from town centre regeneration. Just as a, just as a, not trying to put my finger on any of them.
No, I think, yes, good, yeah. And I guess that those sorts of headings are in partly because it's Pirda.
Yes.
So we've got to be more cautious what we put in. And it all sounds very positive, you know, and that's good to give a positive health message and.
But I've really lost it. Say again, what we put those into.
A suggestion that, um, with the, rolling the allotment thing into the cemetery bit, could we, so we lose a page, that's a page gone. Then embracing spring and advertising the fact we've got shopability becomes one page between it. So they go down to half a page each. And then the town centre regeneration, so the showcase of the, of the thing is, and this is what we're bringing to you, and how we're spending that money stays as two pages.
That gives us our sixteen pages.
And that puts you sixteen pages, and you haven't really lost anything either. You've got pretty much everything in, and I don't think we're touching anything sensitive.
Hmm.
Okay, all right, I think I've got that. There's just too many spring things in it, that's what's kind of.
Yeah.
Ruining me on this, but I know it's a great addition.
Well, we'll change the titles.
Okay.
Essentially, we were trying to remind people that we've got shopability and, you know, it's.
Just have one spring article then.
I guess I'm challenging, do we have two pages about town regeneration, but yeah.
Um, I, again, it's a, an opportunity to have some lovely photographs.
Yeah.
Of Buckingham and what the money could be spent on has been spent on.
Yeah.
We do know in feedback that people love the photos.
True, there's only eleven thousand pounds.
But there can be a piece of artwork potentially that'll be going in there. And then all the sort of rebranding of all the tick stuff and the, the, I don't know, did it?
I suppose we are here to sell Buckingham in a way, aren't we? Because this is something that people see, and I, I, because I like the photographs, I love the fact that it's so colourful, you know, it's so grey, I would. Yeah. So it works for me.
It's, it's a difficult addition because we're trying to work within the confines that we've got as well, which does, in essence, make it a little.
No, but I mean, the, the, our job mainly is to make Buckingham a great place in which to live, work, study, visit, play. That's our job, that's, that's our raison d'etre, really, to tell it to us. Um, and the news is to reflect that, and if we can draw people in.
Yeah.
And make them delight in our town and invite their friends and family to come and visit here, that's what we want, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we could, in that town centre regeneration, if we find that we struggle to fill the two pages, we could, we could always have like a backup article that's something like, what have we done in the past year? With no casters, no pictures, nothing like that, but the dog show is really busy, you know.
Yeah.
Hmm. Stuff that's really colourful and you can see participation of the, of the parishioners, if that's the right, the, the, of the town.
I mean, that's, through photos is really the only way to convey a sense of community and what we offer, so great photos is.
Well, have we, have we highlighted the community prize yet?
Yes, in the last, the edition that's just gone.
Oh, yes.
We had an article on.
What did we put up? Just.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we didn't have any photographs of the certificate, we now do that from last.
So that could go into that, that's good.
We didn't make an interesting photograph?
No.
Is it not in, is it? No, it wasn't mentioned on you.
Okay, all right, so, we, we're doing this on block by the sounds of it, we're saying cemetery, but include mention of the allotments up at the cemetery as well. Um, and also remember there's also allotments on Broad Road and on Tingle Road, so.
There are, yes.
Yeah, I don't know who controls those, but are they, they're not ours, though, are they?
No, neither of them are ours.
No.
Uh, so they're both run by, uh, cultural societies, but Tindray Road, one of them.
But would be, but will be only running the allotments up at, the newly named road, what do we call it, Cemetery Road in the end? We had a whole debate about.
I think it worked something pretty straightforward like that, Colin. I think it was, not new cemetery road, because then in fifty years it isn't, is it? So, I think it was just cemetery road.
So still referring to it.
I couldn't remember that.
Still a dead end, isn't it?
Oh, Martin.
Still a dead end, yeah, it's still a dead. Those are being, um, comics came in that before you, one, 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 last, yes, they did. Okay, so, right, so therefore in a sense that helps, well, the springtime thing is old it, to the old article. The, um, so suggestion is the embracing spring, joy, duty, showscaping, springtime landscapes, and the shopability particularly woven together, either as two half-page articles or all in one woven thing together.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, just to promote people who probably don't know about the stuff that, you know, try and go to see.
It's a good idea.
And then there's still the two pages for the town centre regeneration, lots of pictures where this huge sum of eleven thousand pounds is going to be spent. By views, it could be just subsidising people's car parking events in the street. Um, or we've seen parking meters might not be around, I don't know, whatever. Opening a security corner around the whole car parking, or whatever else it might, no, it's a bit more. Um, okay, so, is that agreed?
Yes, agreed, yeah.
Okay, so we've done that?
Well done.
Right, that's fine, that's, back to the agenda, thanks. It's cool. Yeah? You're cold.
Yeah, it's cold.
It's freezing.
It's not good, is it, then?
It's on to quite a bit of coldish air coming directly.
It's just right, it's, what, did you ask me?
Oh, but when I first. Look at your road. It's just rights as well, but now that I've been here.
I sit there for normal meetings, I'm absolutely roasting because it's right.
It's just slightly warm, I'm sorry.
Okay, enough to do. Martin's got a dog to present up to anyways. Um, okay, audio newsletter, who, uh, will you do, just doing heroin?
Callum.
All right, all right.
Made a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Well, it was Adam, if Callum could make it, so Adam is still out there, he's still not done one.
We can do.
Yeah, boy, yeah. It's about you, sir.
You?
I have done.
All right.
I did last month.
Now, you've not asked me to wear a dress, that's not the whole point, so. Um, okay, so is the.
Intelligent dog.
Is the.
Do we go back to the beginning now, then?
We've done, it's a mother person that we know who might be willing to do it.
Has Lucy done one? Oh, no, she can't.
Oh, good.
Because he's a politician, certainly a non, an absolutely non-politician. Yes.
We have a, we have a, an offer. I don't mind, I've never, I've ducked out, I've never done.
No.
Go on, Nina.
Yes.
All right, I'll propose to you.
Yeah, I would, I'd read the second, second, third, yeah, yeah.
Okay, right, TikTok. Has everyone explored TikTok between this meeting and when we first mentioned?
All those.
Yes.
Haven't you? Yeah, I went on it last night.
What was your impression?
Um, well, actually, I, last weekend we went to see a, a beloved grandchild, grandson up in Hull, or, or, as it's called up there. Um, and we're saying, ah, tell us about TikTok, because I want to know something about it. And he showed us what they had done for, I think it's some sort of Leeds University rowing team, it's very sweet, actually. Um, just very clever little sort of films, videos of, of the, of the youngsters as they were on the rowing machine, falling off the rowing machine. Just people introducing themselves, it was very simple. A split of music in the background. I've had various offers from granddaughter Amy to help us, you know, do it. But I went on last night to get a, an account and I had a look at it. Um, I, I, I couldn't quite get into it very far. I'm starting to get videos sent to me and they will look. It, it's incredible, the numbers, though, on the right-hand side of views. And, um, so there's a lot of people out there using it, but I couldn't get to where I wanted to, which was, uh, did you say Reading Town Council use it or so-and-so use it? I just couldn't get there to see how they use it, but it's clear that a lot of businesses are using it. Um, this, I think Asda popped up, one of these companies popped up. Um, so a lot of people are using it and seem to think it's worthwhile, and the numbers of people involved are big. But I've just, it needs somebody cleverer than me or actually knows. It's certainly worth, you know, taking another step, I think, towards it, to see what they use it for.
All right.
I, because the youngsters, you know, when you talk to the grandchildren, they're on TikTok, they're on Instagram, there are all sorts of things, but it's another way of reaching the younger generation.
Okay, come back to your zone, but you're reading.
Um, so I haven't, excuse me, I haven't downloaded it, but I think a lot of institutions use TikTok to create the reels or something, which they then use on other social media as well. So I know a lot of like educational institutions, sporting institutions do use it, and you don't have to be all wacky and crazy. Um, but sometimes the more cringey stuff goes pretty viral.
Okay, so, thank you, so.
I think, I think the difficulty that we have and the point I've been asked to put forward is, as an office at this time, we just do not have the scope with the staff that we've got. If we, if this is something we're going to seriously take on and consider, as Jane has quite rightly pointed out, it needs to be done properly, with people who are properly trained, and in the here and now, we would, as an office, would just not be able to off that with the current staffing.
Are, are you allowed to have young volunteers? Are you allowed to have volunteers helping?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to edit it, or at least.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, but I was saying, somebody, young, I don't, yeah.
Well, then, the fact we're getting, well, good.
Well, I think we have to move with the times. I'm not a great user of social media or advocate of it. And I know, thinking, if, if we use social media more broadly, I think I was nearly going to suggest that we have a look again at whether we should continue to have Twitter, X, formerly Twitter, because I know there were a lot of concerns about some of the stuff on there, and there have been sort of IT people suggesting it's maybe not a good media outlet, but I have, I'm not aware of anything like that with TikTok, but we have got to be cautious. What we put on, I was just looking at our website, and at the top we've got the Facebook logo, the Twitter logo, or every X, that, is that changed now?
Yeah.
I think it has. We've still got the little bird up there, and then the other one, I didn't know what that was, and it's Instagram, because I pressed on it, I didn't recognise that. Because I'm not that generation really, or, or I, I T brings me out, really. So, I think maybe what, what, I think wherever you are I'm heading is, maybe we should have a review of our social media as a whole, rather than just focusing on TikTok. Yeah. Because if we, if, for instance, we did decide not to do X or whatever they're called now, then maybe we would have space for the TikTok, and would that be a more ethical or better approach? I don't know.
Okay, that's, we'll respond to that probably, but we'll go back to the reading first, will we?
Uh, well, if I quickly respond, um, people on Twitter are now migrating to a non-right wing channel, which is uh, apparently something.
Blue.
Blue Sky, so a lot of accounts are going over to that, but in the past, people have migrated, it hasn't worked out because not enough numbers are there and it doesn't have the same sort of feel. But, um, slight feedback I've got is people are saying that it's more like the early days of Twitter before things went to the right and a bit crazy with Elon Musk.
Okay, just to respond to some of these points, um, we use a program called HootSuite.
Called what?
HootSuite, H O O T S U I T V, HootSuite. And by putting something through HootSuite, it automatically cuts out to Facebook and Twitter or X, um, and to Instagram and, and so on, so it says you just go to press one button and it's. It's out there.
When you say we, you mean?
The town council.
Oh, the town council, okay.
Yeah. Um, and that's operated by Zoom, and I think you operate in Twaria and Sound too. So if we're advertising a event in Lace Hill, Samuel, click on a button and it'll get broadcast on our Facebook page, it'll get broadcast in X, and it'll get broadcast on Instagram.
And it can forward schedule as well, so you can say, can you post again in seven days, can you post again another day?
So it's kind of an automatic way of doing it, rather than going, oh, because they're going to do this, I think they're going to do this, it does inform you. That's what loyalty does. Um, the, the issue with X is that when Elon Musk took it over, who we now know is a great friend of the new president or the fourth governor of the United States, um, is that he changed some of what's called the algorithms, so the people who have been previously banned were allowed back in to, to X. Um, and views of X are, it's, it's become very much a, a quodmyre of bots and trolls. We just want to stir up hate, really. Not entirely, there's still really content on there, depends where you go, depends how much you, you curate your own timeline with who you manage to see, you don't have to see these people to be informed at all. Um, I have said no on Blue Sky accounts, to figure out your problem, you know, I think Blue Sky probably, by the looks of it, that what's happened in the last few days, has got enough momentum where it might well, uh, might well build up enough to make it viable, I'm not, I think it's like threats and the master dog and other things, which is kind of come and go to a certain extent, we'll see. Um, so it's a major.
Yeah. Companies have placed their.
Yeah, some people, they can be shown.
Yeah.
Um, but I think a lot of people probably still, they're lost in the episode.
Yeah.
See what happens, because who knows, um, the value of X might well just go down and Elon Musk might decide to cut his losses and send somebody else in and change the whole thing, so.
Hmm.
We live in odd, odd times to come to central. It does what we do, I hear what you say, so, I think TikTok is, um, it's going to take investment, I mean, I've begun an Instagram account recently to promote my book, but I'm still learning, it takes a lot of time to learn how to operate this thing. And TikTok had its own kind of vibe, in the way that Facebook has a vibe, our generation, which has a vibe, and so on. I think it would be good that we did stand back there and have a look at what we've done. We do sometimes, obviously, we have data of all our usage, you know, think about who we're engaging with. And I think you're absolutely right, James, I think TikTok at the moment is the thing for a certain generation, we have, we have. And we know the stories we had in the past to actually get our youth council together, you know, you say that, for years, we have them, they're growing up. Um, so, I think I, I would propose that we don't make a decision on this. We don't say yea or nay, just say we've had a good discussion, but let's come back to this perhaps later in the year, after we've got the elections out of the way, we've got a new bunch of councillors.
Might find someone there, hasn't it?
So I would say, let's schedule this, this later in the year.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, I'd ask the officers to gather some data on other councillors that are doing it. And how much of it. And how much we're invested in it, you know, running this out of council, not for our, as to our term, that's all, really, it's usually much bigger. You know, I guess I've already got some as well, those that maybe help each other out. That's what I propose, is that, I'll go on to be.
I was just going to say, um, from my understanding, I think TikTok is probably one of the biggest platforms on the planet right now. Because nearly everything seems to be done through there. Um, so I was just thinking that. Considering we've got so many things coming up, would it be worth it, like the group of us here maybe downloading it and seeing if we can make a little reel or something? In regards to the town though, obviously.
I don't think we could do it on behalf of town council.
Okay, so, so if you create a video, does it have to be published or can you just save it as?
You can save it as drop, you don't have to publish it.
Okay, so you don't. Play around with it a bit. So, yeah, so then we can play around with it.
I think.
It's set capacity, I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still set in capacity, it's just not something we can offer and support right now for this.
Yeah.
I, I, I did look into it fairly, I turned. Shows me that it's, the younger generation aren't necessarily looking for information from town council or.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, primarily, we're showcasing our community events when we're putting something out on social media. You know, it's the digital version of the poster in our notice boards, um, or we're looking for feedback in a more real-time environment. Which we do get from Facebook, we have quite a lot of engagement through Facebook, less, definitely not through X, very much less so from Instagram. I don't think you would get it in the same way with TikTok unless people are actually typing comments on, on the reels that you're posting. But whether that would be necessarily relevant about posting, if that's, it's the content strategy that we need to look at.
Hmm.
What are we wanting to advertise on these different platforms and?
Facebook is like a certain age group, you know, thirty, thirty-five plus people who, who have. Considerable time at some.
Yeah.
You know, to write comments about everything and to, to basically put down everything they're doing within the day and nights and.
It would, it would, it would facilitate a greater level of engagement, a broader range of our community. And it was certainly tick boxes in terms of our younger audience as well, which we are really struggling to reach. But I think it can be very, very hard actually to reach them on TikTok because they're not looking for it.
Hmm.
You would have to search things like hashtag.
So what I couldn't understand was how to get in, pass through the forest. I think you have to.
It's quite restricted, you're putting in what you want.
Yeah, I think with any of these social medias, you have to put some time and effort in and then it's trying to beat the algorithm or trying to get.
Exactly.
On top of it or whatever. It's, it's just, just for us to be aware of.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's back to the whole malfunction, isn't it? There's no point, I think, getting into it because we think it's a, it's a fun, jazzy sort of thing to do. We should be getting into it because we have a particular purpose, that we want to achieve, and we can achieve it via TikTok.
Yeah.
So I think we need to think in terms of our social media strategy.
Yeah.
What are we doing with our social media? What are we trying to achieve in our social media? How well are we doing? Whether it need to go next? I think we need to kind of get to that point.
Yeah.
So I, I come back to my proposal is that sometime later in the year, when we've got a new batch of councillors.
Yeah.
In that we just have some big debate about what is our current strategy, if we call it that.
Hmm.
And where do we want to change it and develop it over, over time? That's what I, so we, in a sense, we, we put this underground from the side of it. But I think all of us need to keep thinking about this and just maybe to give ourselves an hour to sit down on the road and just think, well. What is our plan? What are we trying to achieve? Um, and then obviously the ideas and feed those through to someone's, and you know. And take it from there, Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think we already have a social media policy, so we probably, and I suspect.
Policy, I'm not sure of the strategy.
Oh, but we probably need to, I think we have to review that regularly anyway.
But that's, but.
But it should be, shouldn't it? Yeah.
It should fit, yes, but I think a strategy comes with a policy, that's it, we've got a strategy.
No, okay, I was just going to agree with you there and to go back to something that Nina says, that. Young people will be using TikTok because you're not going to find anyone who's, you know, late teens. Even early twenties don't really use Facebook because they think it's like something their mum or their grandma uses. So, so if we have events which are aimed at the younger people or if we ever set up that youth council. You know, this could be the way of reaching out through this platform rather than doing Facebook because kids don't have Facebook.
Well, I think we're going to have to be able to, is there any evidence at all that any town council?
Yeah.
Or even, you know, upper tier council.
Yeah.
Has used TikTok to test them to engage in the community.
Yeah.
That's a question, I have no, no idea what the answer is to.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's great, and it's worked really well, we've now got a thriving, buzzing youth council and people involved that haven't been involved before. And they're talking about their input into council strategy, blah, blah, blah. Or we tried to use it, it was a bit of fun, but a few councillors fell off the bridge a couple of times and that was it.
I think it's the other way around, I, I, with, with respect, I'm just trying this one, which I think we need to bring on the next generation of younger people, younger voters. To make them feel part of what we do. Um, so the question is, how do we attract them? And I think, I don't know whether it's me or whoever said, you know, TikTok, something to be, we've heard of that for young people, but that's, could be part of the answer, it might not be. But I think I would like to leave on the table a question of, you know, in terms of communication, how do we attract and involve the younger generation?
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree.
I thought I would leave on table, but obviously, you know, for how we do it, leave that to.
But actually, we need a strategy.
Hmm, exactly.
Think about what we're using our communication for.
Yeah.
Particularly our social media for.
Yeah.
Um, and, and our responsibility isn't just to use it, it's also social media.
Exactly.
So we should be thinking about that.
Yeah.
So, are we okay with that? So sometime later in the year, the June, July time on the agenda will be. A paper written by Nina or Zoe or a combination thereof, with in, with input from us. As to what our strategy currently is and where it is to go to, you know.
Yeah, good, 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 yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I have no chairs items to. I have no chairs items, right. Um, date to the next meeting is six of January via Zoom. Uh, next formal meeting is the sixth of March, back here in the chamber at one P M. Did we have one point? This item meets two points, was there a reason we stuck it, we stuck it at one point then? No reason? Want to stick with it, okay, you've already, obviously done the end of the agenda, um, went to ten, already. Uh, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Take care everybody.
Thank you.
Uh, look after yourselves, see you with the Christmas lights, switch on if not, well, um, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.